All right. Sorry about the delay. We are here. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us, those that are here in person and those that are joining us online. Today is Tuesday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. It is now six oh eight. May we get a roll call, Mr. Who?
Ms. Falkenberg?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. King? Ms. Lee?
Here.
Mrs. Shelby?
Here.
Awesome. Thank you for that. We can go right into two point one. Minutes. The minutes of the special meeting of April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five will be approved as recorded or corrected. The reading of these minutes will be waived. May we get a motion to approve item two point one?
Second.
So, Ms. Lee and Ms. Falkenberg?
Yeah.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. May we get a roll call, Mr. Who?
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Item three, discussion items. We have Ms. Cash present with us today. Good evening.
Smooth and just solid.
Just does not love this situation. Okay. Give up during second. All right, rush them a little bit.
You, you this mouth. There, thanks, Doug.
Thank you, Doug. Okay, Doug with the assistant back. Okay. So I am going to talk about the launch of selschools.org. It's been live for about a week. Um, I just am going to give a uh quick background, talk about the goals of the website and then show you a few things which I might have to go back there to do. Um, not a big deal. And then the next step. So just for some quick background, um, last fall, we reviewed through three website vendors. Um, these are three vendors that are very popular with uh school districts. Um, we reviewed our current costs and our contracts and things like that. Uh, we gathered some feedback about the current website and then we ultimately selected final site and began the design process. It's a very long process to design a website. We actually didn't even get the pages to do the website until April fifth or seventh, something like that. So we had about a month to actually put the content in because the design process is pretty lengthy. Um, and so I really wanted to point out before we look at the website, there were some pretty specific goals for the redesign. And I, when we're looking at the new website, I just want us to be looking through this lens. Um, one of the things, our website really is a, a marketing tool and it kind of should be looked at as such. It is oftentimes our first point of contact um with new and prospective families. Um, families maybe who even live in our community who are considering what they want to do with their children, if they want to send them to public school or private. Um, and also prospective staff members. And so that was really my goal. Um, is to, to make that first experience a really meaningful one um for those, those folks while also maintaining that information hub for our current families and students and staff. And then, um, one of the other things about our old website was there was a lot of outdated information. So that was really one of my main, my main goals, actually, excuse me, was to update all of that information. Get outdated content off of the website. Lots of forums that were ten, twelve years old. A lot of questions of do we still use this? Um, so it's a really good uh experience to go through and just give a clean sweep. And our old website also was not ADA compliant. Um, in order to get it this such, it would have been a pretty big overhaul. And so it was easier to just kind of let it sit for the rest of the year. And final site is very good at making sure that we are fine uh ADA compliant, the color contrast, all, all of those things. One of the things that will be something I'm continuing to work towards is getting rid of a lot of the PDF downloads. Those are oftentimes not ADA compliant. Um, and so I'm putting that as native content on the website. We've done some of that and I'm going to continue working towards that. Um, so then I do want to, I'm gonna go back to the other side. I'm gonna say was gonna drive me crazy. Um, so I'm just gonna kind of go through the website. Um, some things I'm guessing most of you have been to it. Um, but the things I wanted to point out. Um, like I mentioned, the marketing piece of this. Uh, so you'll see um some highlighting things about our district, things that make us special. Um, and then this proud to be an arc section. If you haven't listened to these videos, they're fantastic. They're very fun to um, to put together. And this is gonna rotate probably annually, um, just people, students and staff telling us why they're proud to go to school here. Um, and then obviously district news and upcoming events. But some of the things I wanted to point out here from a feature standpoint. Um, this find it fast. This is where all of our families and staff can go and just get where they're going really quickly without having to do a lot of navigating. When we were looking at final sites, this was one of the things we said. So we want this. Um, and then these can actually be changed out pretty easily. So um, right now, purchase tickets goes to our athletics link. But if um, if there's a play or a musical, they use a different platform, we can put their ticket purchasing in here as well. Um, and then our families and staff kind of have their own sections here, so they can go and get to things that they need. Um, and then we kind of had to think about differently. Um, our old website was very departmentalized. We think about things by departments. But users don't always think about that and it's not always intuitive. So it was really kind of rethinking how we do this um and where we put things. Um, for instance, the about section in our old website was only found in the footer of our website. That was the only link to it. It's bringing that up. This is really important. We should be telling our story. Um, and then the why S E L. This is, these are the reasons people should choose us. They should choose to go here. They should choose to work here. Um, and then kind of the operations, the nuts and bolts you'll find here. Um, and then obviously bringing enrollment up and front and center because we want people to be able to find that really easily. Um, so you'll see that the navigation is something that people are gonna have to get used to. It's a little bit new and different than what we were doing before. Um, but it, it's really done in a way that um, it, it's inviting users who don't know our district and don't know how it operates and how it's structured to be able to kind of explore in a more intuitive way. Are there any questions about it? Um, as you've been exploring? Um, one of the things I want to do while I'm here is acknowledge some of the people who helped me. Uh, Amber Weisbarth in the C and I department helped me a lot. Um, she actually took on some pages and she's never done lead before and she was like, yeah, sure, I'll help. Um, and she helped get all the curriculum instruction pages and really kind of rethought what that would look like. Um, Madeline De Silo in my, my um office helped get the calendar ready. And then Ryan Morton and um yeah, Ryan Morton really took a lot of the technical stuff. He, um, when they started speaking Greek to me, I was like, okay, Ryan, I'll help you go. No, that makes any sense. So I wanted to make sure that he got that credit where it was due and is it gonna be like, no? This is gonna get old here. Okay. So then there are some next steps for the website. Um, so we are going to be launching an app this summer. It will coincide with kind of our back to school communication. It is not something people need to download. If they want to, they can. It came with our package. It's not something we pay extra for. So um, we're gonna go ahead and launch that. We will also be integrating our infinite campus data with um, with the, the website. It, they have a mass communications um platform called Messages XR Enterprise, Max, M X R E. It is currently in beta testing. They will be launching it this summer. We are going to be a customer of theirs. I'm really looking forward to it. Um, there's some really cool integrations with newsletter capabilities and things like that, that if hoping to move away from constant contact, which is something we pay extra for right now. And even some of our mass messaging that we use infinite campus for right now, I'm hoping we can integrate into um MXRE. Um, and then this summer I'll be conducting trainings for the building staff and departments. I'm going to give them some autonomy over their pages. Um, and letting them kind of manage those things. And then obviously continuing, continuous improvement and updating information. I've been getting a lot of great feedback. Keep it coming. Um, if you see something, say something and I will get it fixed right away. Um, so those are the next steps for the website. And then you may have noticed, I am sorry, this is really kind of getting frustrating when I have to keep walking back and forth, but I'm in a pool of the branding, um, which is integrated here. So I created some new brand guidelines and then I just, I can use the uh arrows here. Um, so you'll see on the website that there was some new branding. This is um some new logos that we created in the fall to launch with um, the, to launching with the website. Um, what we were trying to do is we are keeping the A, that is our athletics logo. We were, are going to let that still be part of who we decided about um this new branding. We heard today that maybe the teenagers aren't excited about um this new branding. We heard today that maybe the teenagers aren't as jazzed about it, but you know, as a parent of a fourteen-year-old daughter, I try not to get offended when teenagers tell me they don't like something I've done. Uh, they said it's, it's, it's good. So I'll take that as a compliment. Um, uh, so this is something, um, I am borderline cheap. And so we are not doing a giant rebranding because that is very, very expensive. Um, so, and since we are keeping the A as part of our athletics logo as well. We will start to put this out there as things need to be replaced. As we're putting a new sign up, um, you're going to see it digitally. Uh, replacing obviously everything that are currently exists. We will be replacing it slowly. Um, we are not making giant uh investments in new logos and new branding. Um, but as part of this, it's actually not working still. So this branding guidelines actually exist on the website. It's in the communications page. So some do's and don'ts, but we also um did the same thing with the school logos. We gave them some new logos as well. Oh, those are cute. Aren't they fun? Yes, the schools were excited about this. So we are rolling these out as well um, this month. So this stuff will really roll out next school year um kind of fully. But we wanted to roll, we figured it was good to just get it all out at once when the website launched. So all of this is available online um through the branding guidelines. And if you need logos, you can request them. We're gonna kind of try and keep a close lid on them just to make sure usage is, is um being done properly while we get them all registered. Any questions for me?
I don't have a question, but I just wanna say job well done. Thank you. Um, I, I, like I just said, I have gone on it every day. Um, just about, just to finagle my way around it, um, just to become more familiar. And I, I can say Thursday, I think, yeah, Thursday, cause I had time. I literally looked at ours and I had other districts' websites up. And it actually was good to see that we're in line with the way other districts' websites are actually looking. Um, which makes it, you know, centralized information, easy access. Um, so like I said, even the the photographs, I was thoroughly impressed. So just kudos and thank you. Like, like really thank you. I think it's a good job. Then one question I do have. With the new logos as they're going out, we are letting, I, everyone is to know that they are to use these new logos going forward.
Yes. So we have, I, we actually sent out um cute little stickers this week to all students and staff. Um, some of the only staff buildings haven't gotten theirs yet. Uh, admin, service, uh, transportation are getting theirs this week. Um, so the new logo has kind of been announced. That's the district logo. Um, and we have announced it. I have been getting some requests for the new
Like from our different groups is what I'm asking. Like I know our band boosters, athletic boosters, that's gonna be a overhauling for them as well with that logo. So I just wanna make sure that it's easily accessible to them, for them to change that as well.
Yes. Go, I, like I said, I'm kind of keeping a lid on it. I don't really want the logo files floating around everywhere. That's, sometimes that's how they can get misused, which is no big deal. I, I don't mind sharing them. And I've kind of been letting people who've been asking know, like, I, no big deal, I'll share the, the files for you, but I'm not like putting the file publicly on the website. If that makes sense. Um, so I encourage those groups to let me know that they need them. Um, PTA, let me know if you need the logos. Um, and so I will be dispensing them upon request. And I can put a little note on the brand guidelines in this pocket. Yeah, thank you.
Um, I do have a question for the website. Um, for parents who had linked the previous website to their calendars, do they need to redo that?
The calendars will not link if you had your synced on your old calendar. That's a great question. We are using a totally different calendar system. Any, um, if you had like sel.ketol.oh.us, glad we don't have to say that much longer. Bookmarked, the bookmark will redirect, but the calendar links will not. That's a very good question, but you can sync them from the new site. Okay, perfect. It knows easy to, okay.
And it's, it's nice too, cause in the calendar, the calendar's already updated. So you'll see for parents, open houses, all of those things are ready to go.
And it's much more user friendly to look at as a parent. Like it, it was so much easier to look at than the other one.
Yeah. Yeah, this, I like this calendaring too. It's easier in the backend. We actually have the sync, have it synced to a Google calendar. And so it's really, really easy to manage. It'll be easier for the schools too. And they're, all the schools have their own, so you can turn on and off whatever calendars you want to follow. Um, so you can follow whichever, and you can sync to whatever, you know, sync them to whatever you want. So if you only want green view, you're just going and sync green view. I do recommend everybody follow the, is keep going with the district calendar and sync the district calendar as well because that's where our days are. And our CID and start and end days are all just on the district calendar. If we put them in every school, it would just show up seven times on the calendar.
Fair, like I used to.
It's not like, did I say like it?
Like I used to, yeah.
Right, and it's
It's like that calendar, so much stuff on a calendar, it makes it really hard to read. I'd not apple calendar, I'm
It's both seven, yeah, it is. Right. And when there's just so anything else that I can answer? Any other feedback?
No.
Alright, well, thank you for your time. As another Q.
Thank you so much, question. Item three point two, we've got Mr. Fuller here with the facilities master plan update.
My people are at the rescue. It used to sound like a wine.
Alright. Alright, for those of you don't know me, and I think everybody in this room does, uh, I'm Lee Fuller. I'm the director of business affairs for the South Edel and her school district. Um, I am presenting on two things today. Uh, the first being the facilities audit and then the second being the facilities master plan. Um, if you recall at the last meeting I presented at, um, there were children from Adrian celebrating and then doing activities and my time got cut a little short. So I just want to make sure I'm thorough with everything that's been going on. And we take the time today to make sure that everyone has a thorough understanding of what we're trying to do um, with our facilities uh over time. So with that said, um, here are the goals for what we're gonna try to cover tonight. We're gonna review the process to date, where we've been and where we plan to go. Uh, we're gonna look at the facilities audit briefly. Uh, we're gonna take a look at a concept for a set, for master facilities plans. We're gonna look at uh potential four phases and then uh identify next steps. So, um, I'll give you a little background on the planning process. So I've been in the district nearing twenty-five years. It's coming soon, I think in July. Um, and over this time, I've had an opportunity to see the district grow and change. Uh, not only uh as in academics, but also uh the schools', uh physical structures themselves. And uh, when I got into this position, I did my own in-depth kind of audit of where I felt the schools were. And at that point in time, I went to Dom and Josh, treasurer, superintendent and said, you know, I think this is bigger than me. I think we need to get um some people to assist with the project. Um, and so they gave me the go-ahead to start searching around and we fell upon two companies, uh, Energy Optimizers and Amresco. And Amresco, we had partnered with previously for a energy audit, so they were a good natural choice because we had the relationship and we felt they did nice work. Um, so as we were preparing and providing them information to get started on their facilities audit in the background, if you click on there or just go up to Facilities Audit Organization, uh, two over your left, to your right, one more. Um, I began trying to organize internally, um, different stakeholders, responsibilities in different categories. So if you take a look, if you scroll down through briefly, there's thirteen different categories. Sites and grounds, internal building systems, interior structures, common areas, educational spaces, safety, security. You know, and the list goes on. And then I tried to pair, if you scroll this way a little bit. You see, if we're taking a look interior physical spaces, Amresco was looking at it, the maintenance department was looking at it, principals and teachers were looking at it. And then custodians were looking at it. So on that, we had four different groups of people kind of getting their eyes on what the needs were. And some of it, if you take a look, maybe if you scroll down here briefly, if you go to Sunview. Um, nope, not Sunview. Go to Roland or Athletics. Maybe Athletics. You can see that everybody put in uh different things that they identified across various domains. So internal, physical, interior, physical spaces, common areas, educational spaces, safety and security. And then there's other stakeholders outside of the school buildings like Athletics, uh, had an opportunity to uh, input what they thought along with transportation or uh technology department, transportation, et cetera. So, uh, in addition to that, one of the larger stakeholders, because they're people in the buildings or they had custodians, so they got their own tab. And if you click on that, Facilities Audit, it should the four domains.
Hi.
Maybe if you click. Oh, yeah, it's S C L Facilities Audit. Maybe that's the right one. Yeah, try that one. Yeah, if you click there, it should, I don't know why it's going. Well.
I see what you
I have an incorrect link, but I, I will say this. If you go to each building, uh, the head custodians were very thorough because they take ownership of their buildings about what they see as deficiencies and how they can improve. So those are some of the things that I was doing in the background in the months of October, November, December, as uh Amresco was gearing up, getting their engineers ready to come around to the district. Uh, so if we go back to that, uh, Master Facilities, third tab over. Yep. Um, they conducted the audit and Amrosa conducted a, a full facilities audit at no cost to the district, which is fantastic. Um, they put an emphasis on the school buildings with students, but then also looked at the business office, administration building itself. Uh, and each uh building received a letter grade in the spirit of education. And if you go to the next slide, uh, skip to the next one after this, it gives you a, a summary. And this summary kind of puts a, a grade next to each one. And if you kind of average these out, you're gonna get about a C grade. So you take your A or A minus from Adrian and your B from Sunview and you combine it with brush. And we're at a C and, and the question becomes, are we satisfied with the C and are we a C sliding to the letter grade I don't want to say, or are we in a position and a place to move up and get our buildings in, in a better place for the next foreseeable future? So see if you can go, well, is there a link to the audit recap? Here, let me grab something real fast. Yeah, we'll try that. Yeah, well, I'll, I'll talk about this for just a couple minutes. So I shortchanged your last presentation on this. Um, and that's okay because the kids were more important, right? Um, but this is the facilities audit presentation and it gives you the square footage of the size of the building, the amount of potential upgrades. And it just shows some pictures of the stuff that you don't necessarily see as a community member or a board member on the regular, but this is like a picture part of a boiler system. Uh, and so we can just kind of scroll through. Uh, also, you'll see as you scroll through, there's various um roofing diagrams with whether it needs to be a replacement or restoration uh or retrofit. Um, so if you keep going down through, it's eventually going to get to a slide that I'm gonna this, no, one more, one more, keep going, keep going, keep going, right here. This one is important to me. Maybe not to everybody, but I'm more of a spreadsheet guy. I like to look at, at data. And so what this does is it gives me a lot of information um from uh the spreadsheets that Amresco provided and put in one spot. So you've got replacement costs, the school, the age of the building, square footage, uh, the amount of square footage, uh, as a part of the entire district. Like, for example, Rush is huge. It's almost forty percent of the school district. All in one place. People don't realize how big it is. Uh, the property acreage and the property acreage as a percentage of the entire school district. Uh, the upgrades that were identified through Amresco. And then the percentage of upgrade totals gives the grade that Amresco did with the number associated. And then it gives what to me is a very important number. It gives me a fund allocation target. And this is a combination of two things. It takes the size of the building or a percentage of the district along with the percentage of upgrades. So brush, for example, is thirty-eight point two percent of the entire district in size and deserves forty-three point nine three percent of the upgrades as per Amresco. So if you take those two and combine them together, it gives you a fund allocation target of forty-one point six percent. So as we're putting the phases together, we should be allocating about forty percent of our funds or upgrades to brush, right? Where, for example, on a smaller scale, you've got Sunview, who's at the grade of a B. Um, they're only five point three, five point three six percent square footage and they only need four point three percent of the upgrades. So when we were looking at phasing, uh, four point eight seven percent should be allocated uh, to that building.
That is. Wow.
So if we go back to the, yep, there. Um, what this takes us into is the master facilities plan. So now we're coming to you with a proposal of phases based on input that we've gathered um, and documentation that we've received uh to kind of equitably and accurately target needs. I guess that's the best way to put it. Based on needs and urgency and, and how they need to be done. So what we try to do is meet the target for those fund allocation targets to put together the phases. Now, each phase doesn't meet the target allocations, but if you take a look at across four phases, they will. And I think I've got a slide to show you of that. Uh, but there's some goals, there's some overarching principles of what we're trying to do with the master facilities plan. So we want to update and then maintain district buildings to a high standard to allow for quality education and comfortable, comfortable environments for uh students and staff. Uh, we want to implement a strategic maintenance schedule to prevent premature wear and system failure and extend usability of facilities, avoid costly emergency repairs and allow for intentional decision-making about long-term future of district facilities. So there's times, this is like an analogy, but it happens to me, right? If you're forward-thinking, you can get refrigerator forty percent off at Home Depot, Memorial Weekend Sale. But if it fails on you, like January twelfth,
You're buying.
You're paying full price and then some, right? Cause you're stuck. And I feel like as a district, we are sometimes paying full price and more because we've waited for the product to exceed its life and then, you know, we're scrambling to pay extra. And so my goal is to try to get ahead of that. Uh, sometimes you pay a little bit more now, but you're gonna save money in the long run. Uh, so then allocate resources efficiently to ensure balance between short-term needs and long-term improvements for sustainability. Monitor, improve energy usage to optimize efficiency and reduce costs over the long term while possible. And then engage in transparent communication with students, staff and the community over time. So even your best-laid plans change. And so it's difficult to say we're gonna do exactly these things because then you're held to well, I thought you said you were gonna do this, not knowing that there was something more urgent that comes up in the meantime. So I just want to let everyone know that you know, a hundred percent, this is the plan that we'd like to pursue until something more pressing, you know, comes along to maybe replace or adjust the plan as necessary. Uh, so our goal is to get these phases in motion, but the speed at which it occurs is gonna be dependent on the buy-in from the board and the community. And so if we get that buy-in, we can move faster through the phases to get the work done. If not, it's gonna be a more lengthy process because we need, you know, funds to do the work. Alright, next. Um, so phase one, uh, So phase one, we're going to address what we feel are some of the largest needs. In my first presentation, you know, I think there was a thermometer or a temp sensor with a classroom over a hundred degrees in the winter. Because we've got valves failing. And that's not just one room, it is a lot of areas around Brush High School. So we want to make sure that comfort issues are being addressed. And it's expensive because some of the things that we're replacing don't exist anymore. You know, they're like nineteen twenties, nineteen fifties, nineteen seventies. So to make those upgrades is expensive. And then addressing pressure, addressing water penetration issues at brush. So we are not currently utilizing the third floor brush. It's about four thousand square feet, you know, and if you value square footage monetarily, let's say two hundred dollars a square foot, you know, that's eight hundred thousand dollars that we're not utilizing year over year, right? So if we can bring that square footage back online, you know, we can do things with it. So there's certain things that are keeping that from occurring. We've got water penetrating. So we've got this really beautiful sandstone rail that kind of goes along the front edge of brush. But then it creates a shelf and then over about a hundred years now, it is starting to crack that sandstone and work its way into the mortar joints and then it's starting to leak down the wall into classrooms. And then we've, you know, there's the cupola and the bell tower, clock tower. Some of those things are leaking. So the square footage for the third floor, we're really not utilizing. So one of our goals is to cure some of those water penetrations. And then in doing so, we'll be able to utilize the square footage at on the third floor, which I think would be a good use of space. And then also we've got some failing roofs that are currently at times, not all the time, but at times displacing students. And so we would like to work on some roofing areas at Roland and Memorial. The good thing about this is this is the smallest phase monetarily. It is a phase that we don't need to go to the community for. It's a phase that was created out of being prudent fiscally with our money. And it's leftover funds from our previous PI. So we can use that to work on these projects. And then phase two. The remaining phases are around fourteen million each. The priorities of phase two would be to renovate the performing arts center. We've currently pre-performance had some issues with that that we're trying to address and we're trying to keep it open and usable in the short term, but it desperately needs attention. And then we have space concerns in the lower K three buildings. And we are hoping that renovating Southland and utilizing this preschool will create space for preschool, but then also potentially open up space in the other buildings by moving preschool. And then third, and that is prioritizing other district facilities. Just to try to be fair to everybody, you know, because those two are related, one specifically to brush, one to Southland. And phase two, what could we do? So we try to do top priorities. With that remaining amount for phase two. Then in phase three. We went back to an HVA focus. This is stuff that's not pretty. It's behind the walls, but it's, it's old. And looking at boiler upgrades for brush, Sunview, Memorial and Greenview. And then district wide tuck pointing. And with those boiler upgrades can come like piping changes. So a lot of times we've got piping chases or tunnels that carry it. And a lot of that stuff, or some of it may be galvanized piping. And it corrodes over time and gets smaller and smaller and smaller and eventually seizes up. So that's a big cost also. And just the funding source for phases two, three and four are dependent on, you know, the board and voter approval. And the last phase four, roll and boiler plant replacement and Adrian HVAC upgrades, district wide roof replacements, retrofits and restorations from all those roofing maps. Elevator upgrades and replacements, district wide priority for exterior door replacements. And then district wide interior upgrades, so like antiquated flooring, carpet, et cetera, painting, ceiling tiles, et cetera. So things are looking better. And so those are the phases and next steps are to continue to engage with stakeholders, board approval of the levy for November, create a master facilities plan website and beginning, working toward implementation of phase one. And the only other thing that I thought, if I can get this to work for a second, maybe it will or won't. Nope. Maybe I'll just pop back here for a second. This is the so this is the facilities audit and this is a pretty cool document. If you like spreadsheets, I'm probably the only one in here likes it. But
Josh does.
Oh, me and Josh.
Me and Josh.
But what you can do is you can go by building, like let's say we want to identify. Come on. Maybe it's not a cool document. All right, well. It is not wanting to cooperate at the moment, but what you can do is you can tease out all of the information by category, by building, by which phase. And so the, it really becomes usable. At that point, I think there's like two hundred some items. And there's some items that are listed in here that haven't made the phases yet. And then last thing. Maybe this one worked. This is just, I asked Amresco to do this and I just touched it up a little bit, but when we take a look at our fund allocation targets and where we are through four allocations, so phase one through phase four, you see it's not always balanced, right? So brush, memorial and we'll only get a little more love at first. But by the time you get to the end, this is where our fund allocation target is. And this is where we're netting out through four phases. So you can see there's a pretty nice balance that we're hitting the needs where the needs are. Any questions for me?
This is impressive. I
thank you. Thank you. And it's collaborative effort. You know, there's a lot of people, engineers. Everybody, everybody in the room. It's definitely not me. I'm just trying to steer everything in the right direction to make the district a better place.
I couldn't tell on the last spreadsheet because my site's not that good, but as a taxpayer, it would be helpful for me to see, which you might already have this column in there. What the life cycle is for these systems that you're replacing. So that I know, for example, like you have a thirty year warranty on this roof that it's going to be another twenty to thirty years before you have to come back and ask the city for money.
Do you want to talk?
Yeah, the nice thing about this, this sets us up. So when we're talking through the phases, we've done a nice job of setting up the tan, the current PI funds that are tied up in Amresco that they're staggered enough for like a ten fifteen year staggering. So we should have funds because when you see that fourteen million dollars, we get roughly about about a million dollars each year. So we're doing this as a like a long term thing by trying to chunk it out and get, you know, do, do big projects faster. So when you see that fourteen million, that's based on what we feel we can get. Similar with the Amresco project, we took what would have been probably a ten year project if we would have chipped away at it, knocked it out. And so we make payments on it when we receive the PI funds each year. Nice thing about that is as those finances financing are getting paid off, it's freeing up and they're kind of staggered. So that's why when we talk about phase one, phase two, it's set up almost perfectly. Like we have a tan that's going to be paid off probably in thirty, thirty one. So it sets up, that would be phase two. And then kind of, it just keeps kind of doing that. We pay it off. And we also look at what the current market's doing with interest rates, things like that. If we can do an earlier payoff, we, I mean, I just did it with the tan, I want to say four years ago, we did a refinancing on it. Got a better rate, was able to pull out a little bit more money towards a current project at that time. So we're always looking to try and cut the time of the investments or the financing short. While also trying to get the best rates and things like that, while also obviously we know the longer we wait, if we were to just chip away at this year to year with the money we receive, we would never get ahead. So to be able to do these big projects and kind of chunk off and check off big pieces of the list. That's what I really appreciate with, with Lee put together because it really puts, it paints the picture for what we can do when we finance properly and just kind of stagger everything out the correct way.
Yes. That's lotion.
Thank you.
Are you, so with, with our presentation here, if you go to our current new, current website now, the master facility plan is under construction. And with your guys is okay. We'd like to start building that based off of what you, what you saw today. If that's something you're comfortable with. Cause we want to be able to paint that picture to people because we're not hiding behind anything. What you see is the, what you see is the truth and the forward thinking and, and the plan behind it.
And they give people access, like every time they want to have access, they shouldn't have to call to the treasurer's office to ask for some of that stuff could be readily accessible and they can see that.
Yeah, I think it's important that the community knows, you know, these are the plans and we, we're working with Amresco and have, you know, far cited a few of these improvements.
It's our brother, you know, I'm all about being transparent. And so it just offers a level of transparency for me. And if we put it out there and everyone is able to see it, like Cassandra said, it does limit those questions. We're not hiding anything. This is honestly what we have.
It's transparency and it's not doing the plan justice if it's not out there. Because I think when you're always in damage control, people assume that you're, you're not taking the money and putting it correctly. It's just you're, I don't want to say throwing money away, but you're continuing to adjust a squeaky wheel. Whereas this, I mean, this is a valid, long-term plan that isn't, I mean, we might have four phases on there, but as the phases work through, you know, you probably skip another phase in the back and you probably just keep looking at it. This, this is a model to continue for years beyond the phases as well.
And I think what Josh said too, that, you know, him and I've been transparent about throughout this whole process. With these dollars and the way we can finance them and stretch them out. And with that tan coming up, like he said, this is really setting us up for the next answer to your question, you know, from a community member. This is setting you, setting them up for the next twenty years. Right? When, when it comes to PI dollars.
And the nice thing about it is that if the phase one on there, that is from, it's actually from Amresco, the HVAC project savings. So who's to say that we won't be able to speed up, you know, or do more than the fourteen we're looking at. We might be able to do more based on, because they give a range and typically we're looking at the top end of that range just to be safe. And it's why we come in so much lower typically. Which, you know, I appreciate because that's how I forecast too.
We know that.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Fuller. Uh, so item three point three, Mr. Hill, the five year forecast?
Yes. Um, I did send it all out. I sent it out to you guys. I will work through the summary. Really highlighting, obviously the, the May update is usually just that. It's an update and it's not as in-depth. I will tell you, this is probably the, the most amount of work I've put into a May forecast in a long time. So and I'll explain as I work through. So first part of it, general property taxes are seventy three point two nine percent of your overall revenue. This one was a frustrating piece this year. I will say because with the new values, property tax values coming in late, the county, the, didn't get the bills out till late. It put behind collections significantly. So I was projecting, based on our inside mileage, a slight increase for a half a year collections for this year of about five hundred thousand. It actually came in five hundred thousand dollars lower than the previous year because of the timing of collections. Now we should see that in the first half of next year, as long as the collection percents hold, hold solid. You'll see I kind of pulled that back a little bit though, because I have concerns. Just based on the timing of the, the bills going out and everything else. So there is, I, I am cautiously optimistic, optimistic of the first half of next year's property taxes being higher because it's the balance of what should be due. So for the current forecast, it is we collected forty nine million, nine hundred ninety seven thousand, five twenty five for the general property taxes. As I said, twenty twenty four, we collected fifty million, four eighty four, one oh three. So that being said, I am projecting fifty million, five oh nine, four ninety two, moving forward for twenty six and beyond. We should see at least that much of a bump, if not the balance of what we were expecting to receive this year. This, this second half. So then item and stop me as I go. If you have questions with each little pocket, they all have their own different nuances this time through. Unrestricted grants and aid roughly seven point four percent. Keep in mind when they do this, this is the foundation payments. No increase or decreases assumed for the future biennial budgets at this time. Obviously we're still working through all that. This could go a number of different ways. But based on the previous year collections, we are coming in at roughly five million, forty six thousand, three twenty seven. And that is based on how the current foundation payments are trending. Within that number, it does have the casino taxes in there. We actually caused a slight dip from two hundred and eight thousand and some change to two oh five and some change. Restricted grants and aid, this is the restricted line items on the foundation roughly four point zero two percent. This is your English learners gifted economically disadvantaged funding, career tech funding and the student success and wellness funds. The estimated funding total for this is two point seven million. And no increases assumed for twenty six through twenty nine. Obviously same thing. The biennial budget could impact these lines and more than likely will impact these lines when it is settled. State share of local property taxes, eight point four five percent of overall revenue. This line has a direct correlation. It ties back to the general property tax line. This is going to be where your homestead and rollback reimbursements. Where the, the state reimburses for those discounts that they'll flow in. The, we estimate five point seven million for fiscal year twenty five with no increase assumed for twenty six through twenty nine. Due to seeing what's going to happen with the biennial budget. And then the final line for revenue, all other revenue, six point zero five percent. You'll see a slight decrease from estimated revenue, four point one million compared to what the district collected in twenty four, which was four million primarily has to do with an increase in Medicaid and income tax revenue received. This is steadily decreasing due to it's tied, this is where our interest earnings flow into. So this is going to decrease based on as our monies get smaller, our, our interest is going to get smaller as well. So it assumes that.
Say it again, John.
So as our dollars are getting smaller, you'll see throughout the forecast, obviously we're chipping away at our totals and our overall revenue or overall balance is getting smaller. Well, obviously you can't get, you get interest based on your balance.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for revenue? No. Okay, expenditures. First line, personal services, roughly fifty four point seven nine percent of expenditures. This, the, the personal service updated estimate for fiscal year twenty five, thirty nine point two million. You know, the typical five percent is assumed that's having to do with steps and cola costs that are built in with contracts that are settled. That is all the way up through twenty seven where our contracts expire for twenty eight and twenty nine. Only this two percent step increases are assumed for that total. Item three point zero two, employee retirement insurance benefits roughly twenty three point seven eight percent. The estimate for fiscal year for this is seventeen million, fifteen thousand, eight forty eight. And this includes all benefits for current staff. For twenty six through twenty nine. For twenty six through twenty nine, uh, we've projected individual increases to each of the sections, which work outs roughly about seven point six percent. For the purchase services, thirteen point four five percent, supplying materials, three point eight five percent and capital outlay. Point seven six percent of expenditures. For fiscal year, the balance of this fiscal year twenty five, you're looking at nine point six million for purchase services. Two point seven million for supplying materials and five hundred forty seven thousand for capital outlay. You'll see, um, if you compare it back from November, we did see a slight bump in the purchase services. And I did send the additional backup for that to kind of walk through it. I will say this is probably the area that we saw based on current environments and, uh, federal funding questions and grants not being issued as, as much or uh, a little bit harder, a little more hoops to jump through to receive those. We did see a few costs that we were banking on grants to cover flow into the general fund this year. Um, we're hoping current environment does adjust and change and some of those could possibly blow back, uh, blow back out. Uh, for purchase services for twenty six, I'm decreasing it for nine point six million to eight point eight million. Uh, this is due to a couple of those big one-time costs that flowed in for this year and hoping we get back on track for next year. And then no increases assumed for supplying materials beyond, or purchase services beyond that. And no increases assumed for just buying materials and capital outlook. So, um, basic, the out, the outlook is that the ending cash balance is expected to find during fiscal years twenty six through twenty nine from roughly seventeen point two million at the end of fiscal year twenty six to an estimated negative balance of twenty four point nine million at the end of twenty nine. Uh, this is why we are looking at putting a levy on the ballot. This is about the timing anyways. So, um, when we're looking through this, obviously I can't figure, and I did mention to, to Crystal before the meeting, I cannot figure the levy into these numbers yet. Uh, until the ballot language is approved, but, uh, this is exactly why we're looking at that deficit, uh, roughly in fiscal year twenty eight. So. Any questions? Then beyond the forecast, I did include because I wanted to make sure we continue to keep eyes on it. Um, I have the, this document here that shows our current enrollment trend for the last five years, all the way back to nineteen twenty school year. The reason I give that is to show, because we've had the ongoing discussion about Ed choice and vouchers.
Nineteen twenty school year?
Yes.
Twenty nineteen dash, oh, nineteen, twenty nineteen dash twenty.
So that being, I gave you this to show that it's not that we are seeing a drastic decrease in students. I would compare it probably more to like a slow, then over time
Re-.
Decrease. And we actually saw a couple of years where our numbers increased. Um, but the page after that, this first one, will show the highlighted part where it just says Ed choice. That is Ed choice based on previous where it had the, um, the, uh, qualifications were lower based on income, housing, your housing income, household income. The one after that, the Ed choice expansion shows, that'll show you the difference between current Ed or old Ed choice versus the expansion. We went from fourteen students of two quarter and seventy eight students. So, and I like to keep you guys updated on that because obviously that is a big drain of the, that ties right to the forecast. But also I know we've had continued discussions on whether or not our involvement with the lawsuit that's going on at the state level and things along those lines. So I wanted to make sure we keep eyes on that. I think the, the couple of things I'd add, um, my position on, obviously with the biennial budgets going and things like that, uh, the biggest thing I think that's going to impact us is if they continue with the thirty percent cap on revenue being received based on the thirty percent carryover. Um, my feelings on that and kind of how I interpret it is it's kind of penal, like penalizing districts that are fiscally prudent, plan ahead and are able to stretch taxpayer dollars six, seven years. If they put that cap, I have to tell you that that goes right out the window. I don't think there will be a district that will be able to go beyond two or three years without having to get an additional revenue. And the other caveat I will put to that is, um, without going too far down
Rabbit hole.
The rabbit hole, um, is the fact that keep in mind when they factor in private education costs, when those funds are following for the voucher, there's a dollar amount assigned. When the dollar amount is assigned, it's assumed a certain amount of that is locally funded dollars. If they're going to start capping our locally funded dollars and not doing anything to that number, that's not penalizing the private schools for that cap, but they are penalizing the local.
So, damn.
And that number, so get the.
And as usual, present tonight, it'll be on the agenda for next Tuesday for approval. Got questions in the meantime, by all means, send them over.
Like I took a picture of how I looked today when he was saying the all this on phone. He always just, I was in awe. I was just shocked. I was just like, because.
Okay. Well, thank you for that, Mr. Hill.
Always rainbows and sunshine.
And we got that early too, to be able to look at it. I didn't have a lot of questions because I was talking to some other people who are looking a lot worse than we are.
Okay.
So they can stay there and I'll stay here.
That's the one thing I will say that this, the funding formula part of this, uh, and being on the floor.
Mm-hmm.
They're, they're getting hit hard too. When you're not updating the, the, the data inputs to the current year and keeping them on the funny, there's, there's some districts that are losing money. I will say at least, at least we weren't on the floor and we're going to see a slight increase.
Right.
But again, that, that's a whole nother thing. Like when you're not updating those inputs, you're not carrying out what the long-term plan, you wanted to switch to the new funding formula. That new funding formula demanded every biennial budget that you update the inputs. If you're not updating the inputs, you're not doing the formula justice.
And, um, I was just saying to Donovan, bless my soul, don't nobody call me tonight. Those numbers don't even intrigue me enough to join the Ed choice lawsuit.
To join, it doesn't intrigue her enough to join the Ed choice lawsuit, even though our numbers.
Cause to charge us, the amount that they would have to charge us in the litigation costs and we're not going to get anything back. We must.
But a lot of us aren't going to get anything back. I think, um, and, and my fans, I was talking to Josh today is, um, because we've been getting, you know, me, you've been getting these same clauses. But my thing is sort of though, at the end of the day, Cassandra, support. Because while we may not be affected, the every district that is bordering our district is being affected drastically in those numbers. And so my question was like, any?
So you are being affected.
He's like, we are. And like, we just correct the, we are being affected. I continuously say we're not being affected. We are being affected. We're not being affected as drastically as other school districts are.
Yeah.
Um, but I do, I, I stand stroking right now, um, of, I don't know this, if it's, and this is probably just me, but that's why we are aboard and we make, we have discussions. But me personally, my personal feelings, which are, are set aside like Josh said earlier, is the camaraderie behind it and for public education, because at the end of the day, we stand here or we sit here and we advocate for public education. And those other school districts advocate for public education as well. And these are still the same public dollars that we're all fighting for and that we're all fighting and say, hey, we want these, this money to stay within this public as source of education. Yeah, we may not win, but y'all sometimes it's better just to show up. But I'm telling you though, and that's how you gang and foster more support.
I just feel like, I don't disagree with the show up piece, but I feel like why expenditure money to satisfy legal amounts that are imposed on you. And then you have the government making more decisions that's taking more money out of your pockets. Like, I feel like sometimes you can't control, I'm not paying for something that somebody else gets to sit in the driver's seat and control. I mean, that's how I feel.
I feel just like insurance.
And then I go to another insurance company when they raise the bill. But when we log on and sign on to that initiative, no matter if next year they raise the price this high, we're locked in. In, in, in my opinion, it's like the variables that we can control are so minimal. And then we're continually being imposed more variables that we don't control. If they wake up and continue to increase the charges, then we are stuck because we've signed in. I'm just like, I don't, I don't see that.
See, I can see what you're coming from.
So I'm just like, until y'all can show me something that Columbus doesn't have that much control. I, I do support y'all, but we still gotta be fiscally responsible.
You know, I've, I've been on the fence the whole time on this. Um, obviously at some point, something has to be done. I think, and, and I told Aaron earlier, I kind of was on the fence both ways. Up until I really started digging into this and the more I continue to look through the biennial. And it's almost like just taking a position now more than it is. She, she says the camaraderie piece. I, I respect that too, but it's taking a position. Because at what point, if you dig into the biennial, almost every one of those sections is leaning towards privatizing which.
It is. And that's the variable piece I'm talking about. Until you start pulling some of that privatizing preference off. Like no, like you keep smacking us left and right. Like that, that's the piece.
Well, I was, I was just saying, um, I think it's important sometimes to make, um, I don't know the amount we're talking about, but would, would build employers, but I think it's so important, especially now to let the public know what is happening and that our public education, which we, you know, started two hundred years ago, uh, is being attacked in a very, uh,
a malicious way.
Is, yeah.
And I think that's fair, like you said, to tell, we, that is good to tell dance. But yet people don't know to pull open the biennial budget and see how much it is being ostracized. So it's like, I need people to see, they see what, what we're doing as public education institutions, but are you seeing what Columbus is doing? Are you seeing how the governor is signing these bills? Are you seeing how, and a lot of people aren't pulling open, like he said. We see the headlines and we all know headlines are what they want you to hear. But there's probably fifty other line items that they don't know about. That as a treasurer and as a district, we peel the layers back. I happen to work in government, so I see another different layer. But the people at home aren't seeing this edge of the fight to where, right? And I feel like they do, but I don't think we should have to show them at the expense of being tied into litigation that we can't control. We can control how much money we expenditure, what we do, how we fix things. But I just don't like being in the driver's seat with a blindfold on and you tell.
There, there are some things that we do, that we strongly believe in and, and we did send a letter, um, to the senate on those things. Uh, one of them being the, uh, what Josh talked about was the thirty percent carryover. Um, which, which was not okay, um, because we are trying to be fiscal, fiscal responsible. And when that happens, you know, as we've been told by auditors and things throughout my time in education is to be fiscal responsible, to have a carryover, to have that emergency fund.
That's the wrong position to take on it, in my opinion, because so you're going to penalize the, the districts that have large carryovers because they're watching every penny going out. But really the people who are going to skate under, the, the people under the thirty percent threshold are the ones that are going back every two to three years because they don't have a large carrier or they're the ones that are struggling. And it's almost like you're rewarding their, I mean, I
Struggle.
Their struggle essentially, but you're also trying to pull the others back with them. Like you're pulling, they're lumping everybody else into that struggle.
And answer, answer your question. We talked about the community, Ms. Shelby, you know, with something we've always hunted our hat on here is, you know, we don't go every three years. And when we say we're only going to come every five, six, seven years for a operational levy that's not astronomical, I'm not saying it's easy. Please don't take me that way. Anytime you ask for any type of dollars, it's, it's not easy to ask. It's never a good time to go on a levy. Um, however, you know, it's something that we've always done and we've been able to do that because of our fiscal responsibility. And it kind of ties into what Lee presented on for the PI and that's what we're trying to do. We don't want to, oh, in six, seven years from now, we don't want to, we just want to be able to go on for our operational. We, we don't want to tag on that PI piece, right? And that's why we're really looking at this from a longevity standpoint, because when that tan comes up, it feeds right into phase three, phase four of what we're as promised.
I guess that, you know, my feeling is, and I, I'm guessing the worst of you probably think, we need to let our community members know the kind of pressure that is being put on their public schools right now.
And you let them know we're litigation, uh, legislative reports.
I just would like to see maybe if we could look at the numbers. If we was potentially can maybe have a later discussion and actually look at the numbers and, um, and honestly, sit down and, and.
That's why I continue to provide them. I, I don't, it, it wasn't a one-time conversation. It's got to be an ongoing conversation because it's a, it's a continuous. It, it wasn't a one-time thing. It's going to be an ongoing thing.
So you see how I feel, but then also see Cassandra's queen too, you know?
And my point could change because it could change. The prospect of it could change.
Because you know, last year I was, you, y'all know, I've been riding that one. Like I'm not spending dying to do anything when I have, but I have, you know, and I'm good. But you know, I'm not going to lie, Catherine over here got me changing my learning muscles. So, you know, and the way I view it things, so.
The scariest, the, the call to action I would say is, yes, we sent a letter, but community members, the more voices they hear and talking about how that thirty percent is not okay. Um, because it's only going to hurt them. It is, we're going to have to come back more often. That, that is the one that I, I scream yell like, please support, like get, get more voices out there. Just letting them know that's not okay. And it's, it's not the fix. I can tell you their fix is trying to take the burden of these increases for the assessed values off the taxpayer. That's not the fix.
That's not the fix. And it ain't punishing us because we ain't under state control. So. Thank you for that. Um, item four point one. You need about ten minutes. He needs about seven to ten minutes in executive session really fast and then we'll.
Be done.
Um, we, our item four, we need a motion to adjourn to go into executive session. So, um, who was that? Catherine and Shelby, for purposes of personnel. We will not be taking any action in this executive session. We will come reconvene, open up and then close out the board meeting for the evening. All right. Seven eighteen, all in favor?